June 3 meeting, the order, county board. Sarah will do the roll.
Good morning. Commissioner Natch?
Here.
Commissioner Clark is, has a medical issue, so that's why she's zooming. Thank you for joining us this morning. Commissioner Persky is not with us. I feel I should say something. He's extremely offended and upset by some departments on how they have not been listening to him and reacting to it. And I guess everybody reacts to things differently. So it's unfortunate. I think some folks are going to have to get involved in resolving some things, I hope. But that's where that's at. With that, please rise. We'll do a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the agenda before us. I would ask that we add item H. The sheriff is going to be joining us. And Mike has talked about he's going to give a report on the, I guess, the best way everybody understands it is sanctuary county designation, however you want to say it. But he'll give a report on that, so we'll add that to item H under the agenda if that's approved. So with that addition, I'd ask to motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Natch moves. Commissioner Clark seconds to approve the agenda with that addition. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign. Okay, now we have the consent agenda. We have eighteen items on the consentage item, agenda through E18. If no one wants anything pulled, a motion to approve that would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Clark moves the consent agenda. Commissioner Natch seconds it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Agenda item F, presentation on the Sauk River Watershed District Board of Managers. Sierra and Sarah are going to...
That's a tongue twister.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm just here today to present you the three applicants for the Sauk River Watershed District Board of Managers. Applicant A is the incumbent, and he has one more term that he can fill if reappointed. Applicant C. Applicant B resides in District Five, and Applicant C resides in District Three.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend approving applicant A, the incumbent, for her last term.
I will second that.
Okay, Commissioner Natch moves reappointing the incumbent. Commissioner Clark seconds it. Did you get a chance to talk to him?
Yes. Well, I didn't talk to him. I talked to John.
I mean, the intent about moving.
Oh, yep. That was, you were correct. That was a little over a year ago. But now, I guess, family-wise, they're sticking around.
Because I had heard he was moving out of state, and so that's why, I guess, I was surprised that he reapplied.
Yeah.
And I was concerned that, and obviously, if he were to move, well, then we'd have to fill the position.
Yeah, for sure.
So...
But good, I'm glad.
And of course, there's an applicant that I certainly think would be very appropriate. I'm not sure what letter.
C.
C? Oh, yeah. Applicant C. And we may have another option there, so, but if there is any other discussion, otherwise...
Mr. Chair. Just real quick, all three are great. One of them serves on two committees right now, so given there are, you know, two other ones, we probably wouldn't have appointed that person. But the other person's great, and I hope the person applies for this or something else again.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of reappointing the incumbent, say aye.
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 Same sign. So we can identify the incumbent at this point. Bill Becker is who's on it and who's been reappointed, and somehow we'll notify him.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is G, property services. Chad Martini, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Chad Martini, property services. Here today, as a matter of state law, the auditor has received a petition for abandonment for County Ditch 35. And so I am obligated to request the county board of commissioners, acting as the drainage authority for County Ditch 35, to set a public hearing to consider that petition. And the date I am requesting is July 8, 2025. So the action item today, and certainly happy to answer any questions, would simply be to set the public hearing to consider abandonment of County Ditch 35 for July 8.
I'll move the recommended action, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Natch moves setting that date. Commissioner Clark seconds it. Just for background, you shared this with us, Chad, but how many landowners are there? And then you said that everybody signed the petition.
Yes, there are five property owners. There is a variety of family members involved in that, but all, 100% of the property owners have committed to the abandonment or have been affirmative in wanting that. One, for a variety of reasons, hasn't actually signed the petition, but has verbally shared that they're in agreement with that motion. So it is expected to be a unanimous property owner decision. As you know, county ditches can only be created by property owners, and they can only be abandoned by property owners. So it is a fun opportunity related to drainage where, you know, we're able to discuss the wishes of the property owners involved.
Only you would use the word "fun" and "drainage" in the same sentence.
Well, it doesn't come up very often, so...
Normally, that's not the case.
That is true.
I cannot believe in other counties how volatile drainage is. I mean, like Benton County and the southern counties, I mean, and really, we don't deal with it overall.
No, it's big business in a lot of places.
No? Commissioner Clark?
Mostly because we have an open seat right now. This was an area my husband said before I came on that I couldn't believe we, that this would be interesting, but I'm kind of with Chad. It is interesting. And let's face it, our most fun one is ditch 28.
Fun, I would not use for County Ditch 28.
That would be the opposite, probably.
I'm using, I used to have to explain this when I was in college in Iowa. That would be sarcasm.
Yes. County Ditch 28 is very active right now. We have, as Mike and I discussed, I've been working with property owners out there who are very concerned with the weather right now. We have some beaver activity. Those folks do not need any, anything that's preventing water from moving out of such an area. So we are working with that.
Dad taught me a lot. He always said, "A good fence line and respectable neighbors with their drainage are the two things that'll keep neighbors..."
Yeah. Until you hire a surveyor and you find out the fence line's in the wrong spot.
So the motion's been made and seconded to set the date. Seeing no more further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Same sign. The date is set. Okay?
Thank you, commissioners.
Is the sheriff with us?
Mr. Chair, I just texted him in, and he should be coming in. I'd suggest maybe you do issues by commissioners as we wait for him.
Okay. Commissioner Clark, issues by commissioners?
Well, I just, I guess this is for the public. I have pneumonia, which is why I'm not there in person, and very thankful for an opportunity to do it this way. Today's the last day of filing, so if you have any interest, you can join the five people who have already filed.
Six.
Six now, yep.
Oh, six now!
Someone just filed this morning, yes.
All right, well, I take it back. There's still time.
Well, 4:30 is about their time, isn't it? I think so. Yep, Laura.
He calls it five.
Five, oh. But usually, they wait like 4:30 or... Would you want to give an update on anything, or there's really no update to give?
Not until the end of business today.
Sure. Got it. Okay. Well, certainly good that there's more than one candidate, so we certainly have some interest, so that's good. Anything else, Commissioner Clark?
Sometimes, there are other things, but given how I'm feeling, I'll wait until the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if it's any consolation, you look good, so I hope you're feeling good. Commissioner Natch?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything specific besides, there's been a lot of different meetings the last probably week and a half. We did have the emergency medical services meeting last Friday. Again, it's kind of a, one of those funding issues through the state. You know, we did approve the budget on that one for the next biennium or two years, but, you know, it's kind of an unfortunate situation where the funding, most of it started with seatbelt funding, you know, which has declined, which is good. It means people were in the seatbelts. But, you know, it puts a strain on that working group, so we'll see where that goes over the next two years. And yesterday, we had county extension meeting. I think that went very well. We had a lot of good information from extension staff. They sound very engaged. I think, I think we're going to see a lot of good things, hopefully, and hopefully they can keep, keep their extension agents, you know, out there. Other than that, North Fork policy meeting tomorrow morning in Litchfield. I don't have anything in specific other than those items, and I didn't get a chance to go to the soil loss meeting yesterday, which you attended.
The...
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner?
No, no, when you're done, I remembered, if it's kind of a big thing, I forgot, so when you're, when you're done.
Well, if it's a big deal, let's do it now. I don't want you to forget about it.
Oh, well, you're very kind. Thankfully, memory doesn't seem to have a huge amount with this. Actually, it was, it's really about the legislature. I mean, I know they're not back in special session, but kudos to our staff commissioners, including our own around the state and our AMC and other staff. Right now, the bulk of the proposed cost shift slash required tax increases, property tax increases, have been taken out of any agreements, and at least for the moment, the tax bill looks so thin that it's hard to see how they're going to pass it, but it has no cuts to CPA. So hopefully, in the next few days, this holds and no more damage is done.
Yep, wishful thinking. We're all optimists, but I'm afraid the reality's going to kick in.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I think the cost shifts, there have been so much good work, and we have to keep it up, as you more than well know, until it's all done. But right now, that, the fights are in other places.
Yes. I understand Sheriff Soika is with us, so I'll pass my issues for now and then to get his report that he can be on his way. So Sheriff Soika, can you hear us?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can see you. Can we hear you, Sheriff? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Been a little late.
Thank you for joining us this morning. Obviously, there's been a lot of action, and I do appreciate the county staff quickly addressing this issue and putting some clarification on it, because obviously, we're all concerned about the miss, potentially misrepresentation, and more importantly, if it is accurate, and I know you've been, the sheriff's department's been trying to do this, what is it that you need to be doing differently? So you can give us that rundown, but that's why I thought it was appropriate that we have that discussion this morning, so thank you for joining us.
Not a problem. So, yes, obviously, the county got listed as a sanctuary county. More or less, rumor mill, it became evident that it was blamed on sheriff's offices, enforcement in general, kind of across the country. And so many different organizations have been working. I know that you all probably provided a letter from the National Sheriffs Association that I think Administrator Williams provided to all of you yesterday. That kind of sums up what's kind of going on. No one seems to know what you do to get on the list. No one seems to know how to get off the list. The list has been taken down. That entire website has been taken down. I think that's a byproduct of the National Sheriffs Association meeting, along with I think, believe that the national district attorneys also spoke up and had that list basically removed because we got named as something. In all reality, the only way to, in my opinion and what I know about it, to be a sanctuary county for anything would be for you guys to do an official proclamation. And we have seen counties in the United States that have done that one way or the other. And I know from years back that it was a decision, I think, by the county board to not really get involved in that, to just kind of remain neutral on all topics and just deal with our local problems. So from a sheriff's office standpoint, we've been doing the same thing we're doing right now, that we've been doing for the last 20 years. And we do cooperate with ICE. There's a lot of miscommunication there that we're like obstructing or getting in the way. That is not true. We notify them when we need to notify them. They do sometimes come if there's somebody that needs to be picked up by them, and sometimes they don't, and I, and there's no real rhyme or reason for that. Sometimes it's a matter of they have staff to do it, sometimes they don't have staff to do it. And then, you know, I mean, they were just here two months ago, working with us on a, on some drug task force raids out on the west end of the county. So we work with them, you know, when we need to. They have not requested any official assistance from us. And in fact, the, the field office in St. Paul has told all the sheriffs in Minnesota that they have no intention of asking the sheriffs for assistance on, like, street type of things or roundups or whatever. Obviously, we all run jails, and that is someplace where somebody might end up through an arrest, through another agency, or through maybe ICE or whatever, and they might need our jail. But there's been no official request, so I think the problem is, we don't know what we did to get on the list, and there's no set criteria or anything that we could even look at to try to correct anything.
And I think that's, obviously, the concern is, how in the world, you just don't create a list and then throw it out there without some rhyme or reason? And of course, we all got contacted pretty quickly, and, you know, I said, I know for a fact, we as a board did not officially do anything to, to do this, so, and again, thanks for staff for sorting through all this and, and working on that. You and I had a conversation a couple months ago about how this process for, for the sheriff's department works. So if you arrest someone and you find out they're illegal, you notify ICE, and I think you said they're in like Fargo-Moorhead is the closest location, and then explain that process. Then they have so many hours that they have that they can come and get the, the person.
Sure. So, and again, we've been doing the same thing for 20 years with no issues, no complaints, no, no, no list generated or being put on any kind of a crazy title like this. But, so somebody gets arrested, and this, it holds true for everybody. Anybody that comes into a jail, and, and I'll just use our jail as an example, obviously, since we're talking about it, but you come into jail, doesn't matter your race, religion, creed, anything, everybody gets the international check done when you, as part of the booking process. So what will happen is, based off that international check, it will flag sometimes to ICE, and ICE will actually then call us and say, "Hey, that's somebody that we want to come talk to, or we want to come and deal with, or we want to come in and take into custody for deportation purposes." And, and then we go through our booking process, and they, you know, they usually will come if they can get there. Sometimes they'll call us and they'll ask us to hold them for days on end. We, we don't do that, and, and you'll find, if you talk to sheriffs across Minnesota, we don't hold them just based on an agent's word. We will, however, if, if we receive a detainer, as it's called, signed by a federal magistrate, a judge, a judge's signature, absolutely will hold those people for as long as we need to. But, but we don't do the other detainers that are out there, basically, that some states do, in which, basically, an officer just signs it, and the ICE agent just signs it. The best way to equillate that would be like me signing search warrants and going to search people's houses. I'm not the judge. I have to lay out the probable cause, and if I get a judge's signature, then it's a bona fide order and, and that type of thing, and, and I don't think we want that. I don't think we want law enforcement just signing orders and kind of doing whatever they want without some cross-checks. So, yes, the, the two offices for ICE are Grand Forks or Fort Snelling, so they both have a little bit of logistical challenges, but that's true for the entire state of Minnesota. So if they're going to go down to, say, Farmington or Pipestone, they're going to have to make the same trips. There's no ICE satellite offices or anything like that. They're out of the metro or out of Grand Forks. And so sometimes it's a logistics thing. Sometimes I think they're, they've literally not come because we're in the middle of a bad snowstorm, and, and, and we just, you know, when we're done with the people that we need to be done with as far as the booking goes, we have to release them. We can't hold them and falsely imprison them for a while. You know, obviously, if somebody gets an international check and there's more serious charges, or there's some other reason, some federal reason, you know, if they're wanted for murder or something, yeah, we're going to hold those people. But if it's just a matter of an immigration violation, and I think that's another thing that people are confused on, immigration is a federal issue, and immigration is actually covered under federal law, and we're not allowed to enforce federal laws as, as local. It's literally in federal law that we can't enforce federal laws. That's why when we do, like, if we're going to introduce somebody to the US court system for a drug charge, we have to have a federal agent, a DEA agent or an FBI agent, attached to our drug task force for that investigation typically. So that's the, the way it works, that's the way it's worked for the last 20 years, and we have not changed anything. I'm literally at the sheriff's conference, Minnesota Sheriff's Conference. I've talked to numerous sheriffs. They do exactly what we do. Strangely enough, one metro county has been on the sanctuary list, and they knew it, but they don't know why, and for three years, and then all of a sudden, this time, they're not on the list and they haven't changed anything. So I, I don't know how some people got on the list, how some people got off the list and haven't done anything differently.
I think the main thing is, Sheriff, is, again, you reaffirmed that you are cooperating, we are doing what we need to be doing, we're not turning a blind eye, you know, we're, we're doing what we need to do. So I guess that's the message.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you want to, you can, otherwise you don't need to, but there was an incident in Painsville last night, and, you know, things like that, I know weigh heavily on all of us, including you, when there's a, a situation like that involving an officer. And on my way down this morning, you can't help but think of the family, the circumstance that caused the law enforcement officers to have to respond, and then unfortunately, the fatal shooting. That affects you and your department, all the officers involved from the other departments that were called in, as I said, the family that, you know, was a part of the conflict. It's just a sad situation all the way around. So if you want to say something about that, you can. Otherwise, just, our hearts are out with everyone, the officers and the family and everybody, so...
Yeah, you know, there'll be more information coming out through the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, I think, later today, once they start wrapping up kind of their officer-involved investigation. I can tell you, I did check in with our officer, officer that was involved and directly involved, and he seems to be doing fine. As a standard, we'll put him on some administrative leave for the next few days while that investigation unfolds. And, and then there's two or three other deputies that were present with him, excuse me, and so we're just to, to, I guess, be nice, to give them some decompression time. They're going to be on some administrative leave, also some paid administrative leave for the next couple days. But otherwise, yes, it's an unfortunate incident, clearly. It's not the way you want things to end up, you know, and, you know, we seem to be doing fine for now, and I'll be checking in with that officer again later this afternoon.
And please let all the officers know that we are thinking of them and that they have our support, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else?
Nope, unless you guys have some other questions.
Anybody has questions? I think not, so, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have a good day.
All right, see you, guys.
Yep. So my issues would be, Shelley left now, but Mike or Jill can follow up. I was waiting for some kind of announcement on that electronics collection, a second one because of what happened the first time, so I'm not sure if there's some plans in place for that or not, but if someone can check on that, that would be, I think, helpful. The public is definitely waiting for some kind of a signal. Kevin said he's going to do a Justice Center update tonight, so we'll be getting one of those. Trail use is certainly very active right now, and there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, learning the etiquette of trails, walkers, bikers, staying to the right, you know, letting people know if you're coming up behind them, all those common sense kinds of things. So just keep that in mind as the trail use increases. Still would like to pursue some kind of a remote meeting, evening remote meeting this year yet sometime, so if we can have that discussion at some point, I think that would be helpful. And I'll let Mike schedule that somehow, that we can have a discussion on that. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else. So for the good of the order, we'll call the meeting adjourned.